Okay. Hammond City Council, October 8th, 2019, public hearing. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Yes.
Councilman DiViterio.
Here.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing none. We'll move into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
I'll ask you to all stand for our prayer, and I'll ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
We take a moment of silence in honor of our officer, Emmanuel, who lost his life in the line of service. Most gracious, loving, eternal, heaven and earth, we just thank you right now, Father God, giving you glory and honor that is due your name. Thank you that this is the day that you've made, we rejoice, and we shall be glad about it. Father, we thank you for your darling son who died upon the cross, that we too would have access to the free of life. We thank you that his blood was shed for our sins. Father God, we thank you that everything this evening will be done decent and order and pleasing, and in your sight, where you will give all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise. Father, I should continue to bless our city administrators, continue to bless our council. Right now, Father, continue to bless our police department, our fire department, that they continue to protect and serve us in our great city. We thank you right now, where you will give all the glory, honor, and praise, and everything that is done tonight here in Hammond. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now for our pledge of allegiance, I ask all veterans and active military to render the proper salute.
Let me introduce you to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which the stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for our council reports. I believe Councilman Andrews, if you'd like to go first.
This time I'd like to call the chief and Captain Luntz there to come up to the front. Mayor, come up with me.
I want to make this presentation to you on behalf of me and my family. My grandfather served on the Hammond Police Department. After he got his start with the Marshals Office, and he was working between the Marshals Office and the Hammond Police Department, and he decided to let the Marshals Office go and stick with the Hammond Police Department. He served the force with all his heart, and I thank you for me and Chuck picked up our community's service by going into law enforcement. In 1978, April 4th, 1978, he became the first African American to be promoted to sergeant in the Hammond Police Department. And as far as that, he probably was working at the time.
I worked for him.
That's right. Now, one of my requests is that you could be here tonight, because I know you're probably the only one that's still on the force that was there to actually work with him and with Chuck. So, I had this picture here made to go up into the department along with this plaque that go on the wall somewhere, and that you can put up the funders. It says, Sergeant Charlie Muse, first African American to be promoted to sergeant in the Hammond Police Department. His years of service was June 15th, 1963, to September 30th, 1981. And he was promoted to sergeant on April the 4th, 1978. You can find the place somewhere in the department to hang that. This goes right through.
That's all? Other council reports? Follow that up?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I got council reports. Well, your father was going on, but I had some trees cut in the community, in District 3. When I asked to get the trees cut, the people need to get their property surveyed. And now, I went to look, and I see the trees been cut, but I don't see no starbs or nothing showing what the property had been surveyed. So, I'd just like to get a little input on how that work, because what I see is, if it's not in writing, we're gonna take it upon ourselves what we can do and what we can't do. So, I just need to know the rules and regulations on what I need to do for when someone asks me about getting a tree cut, that they say on the city property. So, I'd just like to know more about that, what all I need to do.
Robert, just basically, I need to call into the street department, which is Robert's guys. They also go out and cut trees, and they're putting in work requests. Is that right?
Right. We use the map provided for right of way, and we measure from the center of the right of way, half the width of the right of way. If the tree within that belongs to the city, if it's outside, it belongs to the owner, unless they can provide a survey that contradicts that.
Okay. Well, what I see, the trees that I asked to be cut, they didn't get cut. But Carly, what she called me, the president of the council, she called me and asked me about it. And I said, Carly, well, I tried to get it cut. I called Robert Morgan out, and that's what he told me. And I told her exactly what he told me. But now, I see the same tree that I tried to get cut, I couldn't get it cut. And now, she got it, she was able to get it cut, but I couldn't understand what's the difference in me trying to get it cut versus her trying to get it cut? I'm talking about on Green Street.
Did you go out there more than once, Robert?
What location?
I went out there multiple times. The last time was Gonzales, after we got the energy involved, they met with the homeowner, and they worked out a compromise, an agreement of what they would do.
So, Energy actually cut the tree?
Right. I would ask to cut it to the city. If not on city property, I can't cut it.
That is what happened. Devon, you and I hadn't talked about this, but when I asked Mr. Morgan, he did say that they couldn't cut that, but maybe Energy could help. And so, I had the homeowner reach out to Energy through the contact Mr. Morgan gave, and that was the end of it for me. But apparently, Energy took care of it, not the city.
Okay. Well, it's just like that was told to you. I couldn't be told it?
No, I understand.
Yeah. And that's all I asked for. So, I try to be, I try to do my best to be a peacemaker. But I'm gonna tell you, I do have hell in me. So, whatever you tell me, please tell me the truth, because if not, I am gonna bring it up, where the public gonna know everything that's going on. Because what it is, it don't make sense for us to divide the city to black and white. If blacks have a problem, we need to try to solve them. If whites have a problem, we need to try to solve them. And that's all I'm asking for. And I learned, showed I'm gonna go there, start saying, is it a black thing, or is it a white thing? So, thank you very much.
Any other council reports?
I'm good today.
Okay. I participated today on behalf of the crew of Omega with a lunch to the police department today. And it was a nice gesture that they did for what the police department does for them with the Mardi Gras parade, so I just wanted to mention that. And it was very well attended by our police department, and they, I think they were all filled up from it, so. Mayor, any reports for you?
We had a very successful Hammond Airshow fundraiser, thanks to Billy Nungesser, providing us with some shrimp and fish, the sheriff's department cooking with their team, also Robbie Miller providing buses to bus folks from where the parking was to the event. A very successful event. Over 300 people showed. It was a good time. We had high air balloon that was provided, that did tethered rides for the sponsors. And we also had the Commemorative Air Force out there with their various aircrafts. So, it was a very good event for the airshow. Also, don't forget, October 19th, Saturday, from 8:00 to 10:00, we'll be meeting at the downtown Oaks Parking Mall, and we'll be having a cleanup day. So, that'll be October 19th, Saturday.
Thank you. Now for our minutes. Need a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve minutes from our September 24th, 2019.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Resolutions, old business, none, new business. Number one, a resolution to approve alcohol renewals for 2020. Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. This is the renewal. So, I've submitted a list for y'all to look at, and every one on this list is a renewal. It's not anything that's new, it's already been before council for approval. It's just an annual renewal of existing alcohol.
Any questions by members of the council? Anyone here in the public on this matter have questions? Pleasure, the council?
Now, this is for which, this is for the city in general, the whole city?
The entire city that has alcohol. Anyone in the city limits of Hammond who has an existing alcohol, which has already been before council for approval, that it has to be renewed annually, every year. And they're due by December 1st. They're actually delinquent on December 1st. There's a 30-day grace period to December 31st. That's why their license says 31st instead of the 1st. But they have to get their application for renewals back in before the 1st of December. That's why we're doing it so early. Gives them a little time, because they do have to get a clearance from the sales tax department and various things that I asked for. So, we try to give them at least a month to get it all together, and that's why we do it so early.
And we can approve the whole list at one time?
Yes.
Yes.
Salvador Nicolosi, 3607 Highway 190 West. When you say the whole list of people, we don't really, I mean, I don't know the list of all the people that own the bars or legal parts, but does the city send out, like, you know, some kind of paper to them to notify them in advance that they gotta renew? Or do they normally just renew automatically?
Okay. There is a piece of paper that is sent out to every persons that's licensed in alcohol. It's a renewal form. They generally know they have to renew that every single year, and I suspect they'll be looking for it, because their license has an expiring date. So, yes, they are notified by their renewal every year, annually.
Okay. So, this comes from the city and the state, or just the city?
The city's renewal time is different from the state's renewal time. They have to renew with both. I believe they have, it's a fiscal year with the state, and it's due in July. It's an annual year with the city. It's a calendar year, so it's January to December with the city. So, they are due at different times, but due in both places.
Okay. So, other words, the city does notify them in advance, 60 days or 90 days in advance?
That's what this is. That's what we're doing, getting approval to send out that notice.
So, the public really doesn't know exactly who's on this, just going by people who've already had their license previously, or new people coming in, too?
No, this is not new people.
Okay.
This is all, these are only people who have been before the council and have gotten approval for their license.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Pleasure, the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wales.
Yes.
Councilman Leon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number two, a resolution to appoint Celeste Shields to the Hammond Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a three-year term from October 9th, 2019, to July 29th, 2022, to fulfill a university appointment. Lacey Landrum.
As information was delivered to the council last week regarding both this appointment and the following one, dealing with the civil service board. This board is comprised of five people. One is elected from the fire department, one is elected from the police department, one is the mayor's selection, and two appointments come from Southeastern Louisiana University. All of this is according to state law and how that board is comprised. So, two of these folks were on the list that came from Southeastern, and we are recommending going forward with their appointments. Celeste Shields, and is an attorney here in town, and has experience working with public entities and other aspects of the law. She'll be replacing John Pearson, whose term expired on July 30th, 2019. And she is here tonight.
Any questions from the council? Anyone in the audience on here on this matter, other than Ms. Shields? Pleasure, the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution to appoint Dr. Gabe Willis to the Hammond Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a three-year term from October 9th, 2019, to July 29th, 2022, to fulfill a university appointment.
Same as the prior appointment in regards to the process. Dr. Gabe Willis is the interim dean of students at Southeastern Louisiana University. He's served on the Office of Student Conduct Board and several other committees that have crafted or revised major policies for the university. So, we believe he's well qualified for this position. He will be replacing George Sullivan, whose term expired July 30th, 2019. And he is also with us tonight.
If there's any questions for? Questions from the council or from the public? Pleasure, the council?
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution to appoint John Exnicious to the Hammond Historic District Commission to fulfill the remainder of a four-year term for Marguerite Walter from January 1st, 2017, to December 31st, 2020. By the way, I knew how to pronounce your name from your radio ad, so, thank you. Mayor?
John is here tonight. He's in the back. John, a graduate of Southeastern, a local realtor, remodeled, lives in the historic district, remodeled the house on the corner of Magnolia and Charles, the old Cape House. Also has another house on West Thomas, Belize, getting ready to get started on. I think he'd be a great asset to this board, and I request that John move some further.
You have some big shoes to fill with Marguerite leaving.
Well, and I just want to say that he's taking over the rest of Marguerite's term. That's why it's kind of an unusual timeframe listed there. But he is greatly willing to serve, and as for Celeste and Gabe, too. It's nice to see a lot of people stepping up to serve on these boards. It's a lot of work, and thank you for volunteering to do so.
Questions from the council? Anyone from the audience on this matter? Pleasure, the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
No.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five, a resolution in support of updating Hammond's strategic plan through the Louisiana Development Ready Community Program. Stacy Neal.
Good evening. Good to see everybody. I was asked to come just to kind of give a real quick brief history on the Louisiana Development Ready Communities process, and kind of a little bit of history and answer questions for y'all. In 2011, the city Hammond went through this process. It's a mayor-appointed committee, approved by the council through resolution to do a strategic plan for economic development, basically. At that time, Hammond had its own board and had staff that did that, and it was used very much for program of work. You know, that was the purpose of it at that time. Part of that is also an assessment of the community that's used to fill out requests for proposals, hopefully, and should be, and chambers, and DDDs, and tourism. So, everybody's kind of given the same information if anybody calls. If anybody calls and says, "How many hospital beds do you have?", hopefully, everybody's given the same information. Through that process, the state comes in, LED, we come in, and we help facilitate that process for the city. And initially, it's a very long process. It's about a six-month process. We've just kind of been going back to the cities that haven't updated plans in a while, and talking to the ones who want to update those plans. It is not that entire long process. It's not a whole lot of work for council. It's not a whole lot of work for city employees. It is a community piece, so we encourage you to include, you know, people from downtown development district, even somebody from their board, maybe not their staff, the chambers, tourism, obviously, economic development. There has to be buy-in from kind of everybody in the community to do that. Two or three meetings to do an update, not, again, not the extensive amount of time that it was for those of you who were involved in that back in the day. People who sat on that committee in the past were people from the university, someone from city council, downtown development district, the school system, the community college, somebody from workforce, somebody from the chamber. That was kind of the original group. Hammond was very successful with their plan. I think everybody got a copy of that? Am I right?
Yes.
So, some of the things that were accomplished in that was, back in the day, it was supporting that funding and looking for funding and whatever needed to be supported for the airport tower, the school system gradually, you know, getting better. Those things have happened. The workforce stuff is very outdated. The assessment is very outdated. We think pretty quickly, in about an eight-week period, that we could have that updated and at least have everybody singing on the same, from the same song sheet, you know? So, if you call somebody from the tourism office, they know what Hammond's working on. They know what you want, you know, to be working on. You know, helps when requests for proposals come in, and you have 400 questions that come in, and you have a week to answer those. A lot of that information is in the assessment, and nobody's calling your fire department and your police departments and all those kinds of things, trying to find out all that information. We encourage cities to continue to do it. We've come up with some benefits, other than just the plan, to encourage that. It's somewhat new in the last couple of years. We have some tuition availability for continued education in economic development. It helps people to just learn what economic development is. Obviously, it gives you your program of work. There's some new programs in the state that weren't even addressed back at that time, business sites, back when this was originally done. It was all about industrial sites. A lot of cities get left out of that, because you don't have 100 acres inside of city limits. This is more geared towards business sites, where you're looking at white-collar jobs, that kind of thing, office buildings, those kinds of things. So, we're pushing that program into there. We're doing, working with Entergy's group to do customized community pages, so that when you go in and look at the sites, it's customized to what you want the city to say, and not just, you know, basic demographics that are pulled down from data. So, we're working with the cities to make sure what you're wanting your message to be is what is out there, and not just what they're Googling on the websites. And obviously, your information for your request for proposals. Those are kind of some new things that we've brought in. We're working on some marketing material for the LDRC communities. And then, when the secretary is speaking to any groups, the LDRC communities are discussed and pushed specifically to our project folks who are working to recruit business. So, they know that you're ready, and you have a plan, and you're willing to work with business. So, that's kind of what it is. Our hope is that we can come in and help facilitate a new plan. Not our plan, your plan. We're listening to you and just putting it all together for you. And we're here to help with that.
Any questions?
Well, I'll just say that I asked Stacy to be here after talking to, I know the Chamber of Commerce and the Tangi Economic Development have all expressed an interest in us updating this plan. I went to the Economic Development Seminar last week, and one of the things that really got me was about putting goals out there and identifying what your goals are and how you, and I was quite impressed that in 2011, that some goals were put out there and actually achieved. And I think it's time for us to update that, and I hope that we can work together with all facets of economic development to, you know, attract some business and good things to Hammond.
And I do think with the change in, from when there was staff, and Lacey and I talked about this, when there was staff, you knew who your person was, and they knew what your goals were. With it being now a different structure, you want to make sure that that parish person that's representing the whole parish knows what Hammond's goals are. Just a thought. Thank you for having me. I love working here, y'all know that. I'm a little biased.
Melissa, did you want to come say a few words?
Hi, guys. Hello. Melissa Bordaline. I'm representing the Greater Hammond Chamber. My home address is 17242 Paddock Circle here in Hammond. So, I wanted to just come and share that it is exciting to think back to what you had on that paper in 2011 and what you've accomplished. When we look at this and the possibility of redoing and updating, the thing that impresses us most is the assessment, that opportunity to look at what has been accomplished here. So many of us, you know, at North Oaks and at the university and at the chamber and others, we all have that information gathered, because we've had to report it to our own internal and external groups, but that collective information is really important. And at the chamber, when we're approached with businesses, we always follow the proper command. There are the right people to get them to it, at the city and at the parish. And we're always gonna do that. But we also have so many opportunities to sell the city, you know, in other places, in the region, throughout the state, and with our chamber affiliates and other organizations. So, having that collective information would really be beneficial. I also think that it's great, when it comes to the point of the goal-setting that will come from this, and the involvement of everyone, the city, the city's team, the DDD, tourism, the chambers, what have you, we think that that would be a benefit. So, we just wanted to make sure that we echoed in that idea of giving this consideration. One thing that I liked that Stacy just said, is she said what you want your message to be, and we always want to champion what the city administration and the council's message is, because that's our job, and we're gonna do the best at it. So, I hope you give it some consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else here on this matter?
How you doing? Standing at that 1109 South Martin, oh, turn the button. Audubon Drive, I'm sorry. I would like to say we are a member of the chamber. I think it's a great idea, because it helps us, the small business owners, get our names out and get our initiative out, get our projects known and seen through other means we would have to get out and come out of our pocket. And, you know, it's a lot of work for small businesses for to do those type of things. And for these people to set out and want to update and highlight us, that would be, I think, a great asset to the community, within keeping and on track with that, with community. We have talked with the, come stand up and talk with me for a little bit. We talked with the Columbia. I remember the last time we were here, we were telling you guys that we were trying to get a benefit going for the after-school program. We have solidified the date of January the 24th. We're working with a couple of local businesses here in the area to help us get out the message and help us get that spread out. We're gonna do a comedy show over at the Columbia. It's gonna be one of the first of its kind to be done, and the proceeds will go to the after-school program to help invest in our community. I think that is the biggest investment we can ever pull off, to get back at least some pay, and that pay would be, our community would thrive better with our children, better equipped to activate here in this world. And I mean, Hammond is a great place. We see a lot of activity from the council and from the people, and we definitely want to get that message out, that we will be going ahead with that program with the help of the chamber. It's gonna help us get our message out and help us write the right path to get everything up and going. So, we will be doing this here real soon.
I guess, well, I'm asking, like, how do you, well, I heard, I think you said something about stats, or, you know, how do you give your information to that service?
Well, I believe that there's information that's gathered, it's basically put into a report, and that's where the chamber and economic development, Tangi Tourism, all have this report to access whenever someone calls, and they want to know what our workforce is, or what... is or what, you know, the ACT scores of the students are. I mean, different, different types of statistics are gathered. Basically, think of it as like a database that's in a report.
All right. And would something like this help with their, with their statistics?
Hopefully. Hopefully. I mean, if someone has a question and, you know, they're trying, they're trying to call to come into our town, if we can answer it really quickly, it may help spur interest.
Yeah. All right.
Anyone else? Questions from the council? Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to accept. Second.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Number six, a resolution to purchase F-250 crew cab and a F-150 SSV for the fire department for Billhood Ford for a total of $58,464 and zero, and one cent. Jana.
Good evening. Both these vehicles was on Louisiana state contract. We reached out to our local dealer, Billhood Ford. They was able to come in within the 3% adjustment and actually when truck came in cheaper than the original state contract price. Chief Volks sent y'all an email explaining to you the usage for these vehicles, so we're just asking council's approval to proceed.
Yes. That email was very helpful. Thank you, chief, for sending that.
It was. Thank you.
Didn't know what you'd be using vehicles for, so I appreciate it. Questions from the audience on this matter? Questions from the council, comments? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve.
Were these my replacement? 2009 Carbon Road, Hammond, Louisiana. I just want to know, were these like replacements of certain vehicles? Were older ones went out or something?
Yeah, so one of them is an actual replacement. So every, every so often, we, our Fire Prevention Bureau uses probably the most vehicles, so every so often, we update their vehicles. And then the vehicle that we're, we're replacing with, we pull back and it's not going to be used as much, but we use it, try to get more use out of it. So the vehicle we're actually replacing is a vehicle that was actually pulled from fire, fire, fire prevention many years ago, and we've been using it and it's just starting to incur some, some mechanical problems. Well, we've been using it for us to get some schools and stuff out of town and with, you know, it's not so reliable anymore, so I don't want to, you know, stick somebody out of town in that vehicle. So we're going to pull another vehicle in and allow that and replace that with a new vehicle. Another truck is going to allow a current truck in our fleet to become a emergency services vehicle. So instead of running our large apparatus to EMS call, we'll have it run a smaller apparatus to our EMS call. A little bit more maneuverable, less fuel, less maintenance. And sometimes it could be a little bit quicker and leaves our larger apparatus to do what they're actually designed to do and be fire trucks and not EMS. So that's just kind of how it's going. Sort of a replacement, sort of an addition.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the question. I think we had a, we had a motion to approve from Councilman Leon.
Need a second. Second. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number seven, a resolution to approve Hammond Harley-Davidson to obtain a waiver of the open container law to serve beer on premises at its October, sorry, Biketoberfest beer tasting on Saturday, October 19th, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Jaden DeChantos.
Hi, everybody. So Saturday, October 19th, we're doing an onsite beer tasting. Outside, Norley Barley is our, our beer vendor that'll be there. It's a beer tasting in two-ounce cups with ID wristbands to make sure that our money's over 21. And that's pretty much it. It's from 11:00 to 3:00. It'll probably shut down earlier than that because we only have one vendor, but 11:00 to 3:00.
Good. You know the drill. Answered all the questions. Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comment from the council?
Yeah, I have one. I went, I went out to one of their events and truly, what she talking about, they actually do that from the wristband to everything she been saying, and she didn't even know I was going to come. They do everything the right way.
Oh, that's good.
And I like how they do it.
Thanks.
Glad you're checking up on us.
He did. He showed up one day and I heard over the phone and it was like, "Councilman Wells." I was like, "Oh, my goodness, he came." Thank you.
You're in the market for a bike.
A bicycle.
All right. Pleasure to the council.
I make a motion to accept. Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number eight, a resolution, one, accepting a $19,198 federal justice assistance grant to purchase new and replacement tasers for the Hammond Police Department, and, two, authorizing the mayor or his designee to complete and sign related documents. Charles Borchers.
This one should be easy. This is the follow-up to the application that you guys approved some time back. We were fortunate enough to get the funding, so we're just asking for your permission to have the mayor sign those documents so we can start making these purchases.
Good.
There is no match.
You knew my question, too? All right. Question or comments from the audience, from the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number nine, a resolution, one, accepting a $13,757, 57 cents bulletproof vest partnership grant to purchase new and replacement body armor vests for the Hammond Police Officers. Two, approving a $13,757, 57 cents cash match from the Hammond Police Department. And three, authorizing the mayor or his designee to complete and sign related documents. Charles.
I believe we applied for $14,000 and we received $13,757 and 57 cents. So our match is dollar for dollar, penny for penny. That will come from the police department. I believe the chief is looking at his uniforms allowance for that. So there is the match on that one. And this should afford us, I think we calculated about 35 vests total out of, out of this grant and some additional funds that we have currently.
Questions or comments, anyone from the audience on this? Questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a question. All, all officers required to wear a vest?
All the officers are provided a vest. They're not necessarily required to wear it on a daily basis. We do suggest that they do. We do try to get them to all wear it. I would tell you that the majority of the department, especially the guys who are on it on a daily basis, do wear their vest. A lot of the office personnel, they're sitting at a desk and they don't, that's another way to pass on it.
All right.
But it's, you know, the new vest we have, the throwovers and all that, if you ever find yourself in a situation, you can throw the vest over, you can go right in your uniform and it's easy to wear at home. We do run out, we do, you know, do other things.
So when, when they throw them over the uniform, a person still may see the patch letting them know that that's a police officer.
Absolutely. It says police, it's labeled, I think it's police here, police here, and a big police on the back. Yeah, and of course, it's a radio and all that on it. So yeah, it's definitely identifiable as well as there's a badge on the department officer. So it really almost looks very similar to our existing uniform shirts.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Charles. Number 11, a resolution to adopt the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire for fiscal year 2018, 2019, and to authorize the mayor to sign. Oh, I skipped, didn't I?
Y'all, I'm sorry. You gotta nudge me.
Number 10, a resolution to, to approve contract change order number one for sewer system rehabilitation fiscal year 2018, City of Hammond, Louisiana, Project 31813 for an increase of 60 days. Chuck.
This is a hyperlinked. It's a $0 change order. This is a grant. Typically, we don't do change orders until the project is over. However, we don't think we'll be at a, by the time we make the completion, we'll have been to another council meeting and the contract time will technically expire, although 90% of the time, you don't see a change order until the job's done. So they have about three or four weeks of work left. We're building in some rain days and we have a 60-day contract time extension to allow them to finish. I don't think it'll take them near that long, but that'll account for rain days.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Chuck, thank you for calling me too this morning. And one of the questions was, what I had, they was working on the sewer system, but they put signs on the people's doors, letting them know not to use the water. And one of the issues that I have, Mr. Chuck, I talked to Mr. Chuck, he told me it's a two-day prior and the contractor said it's 12 hours. So I think one of the...
The contractor's an error.
Huh?
The contractor's an error.
Okay.
I don't know what he told you, but he is definitely an error. I've talked to the foreman, the project manager, and the gentleman you talked to today is an error. I heard about the discussion you had with the guy in the field, but he's wrong.
Yeah. Well...
Nobody's going to come by and drop a hanger on anybody's house the day before. It's going to be two days before to let them make other, you know, arrangements. And there are examples where I don't think they should stop them from using the water at all. That's a personal opinion because I don't think everybody should have to turn their water off from 8:00 to 5:00 when you're only working a block and a block and a block. Maybe two or three hours would be enough. But go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I know you heard from the foreman that he didn't know why we couldn't do for 12 hours. Well, we're not. It's going to be two days. Excuse me for interrupting you, but I, I knew you had that discussion because my inspector told me that the foreman told you an error. I said, "Well, he's dead wrong." You get another one of those, call me and I'll, I'll shut them down. That won't happen. Is that your main concern?
I'm through with it.
Good.
I know.
We will stop him. I think there was another vendor on Carbon that had a problem, too, with losing the water. Norley Barley, I believe, that you know anything about that, Mr. Wells? Norley Barley?
I'm through with it.
You're through with it?
Yes, sir.
We're taking care of them, too, by the way. You can tell them.
Any other questions or comments? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
No.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 11, a resolution to adopt the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire for fiscal year 2018 to 2019 and to authorize the mayor to sign the questionnaire. Say it again.
Good evening, everyone. This compliance questionnaire is required for the audit and we complete this every year.
Questions or comments, anyone in the audience or by the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
12, a resolution, one, approving Hammond North Shore Regional Airport's 2020 to 2025 capital improvement plan. Two, requesting that the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development's Division of Aviation provide funds required to complete the airport improvements specifically described in the airport CIP application. Three, agreeing to certain assurances related to the proceedings. Four, authorizing the mayor and the city, Hammond City Council President, to sign CIP documents. And five, authorizing the Hammond City Council Clerk to attest to these signatures. David Booth.
Good evening, everyone. This is the first time the capital improvement plan has come before this council for, for approval, but it is something that we do once a year. It's due to the state by the 1st of November of every year. So we start toward the end of the summer, just kind of bring you up to speed. We start talking with our state transportation representatives for the, for the aviation department. We, we consult with the FAA, we consult with our, our consulting engineers, Michael Baker International. And we come up with a list, basically, it's our, it depends on what gets funded in, in those years, but sometimes it's a dream list, looking five years out. Sometimes it's an actual document, living document, that is showing you what's going to be funded over the next couple of years. It just depends what money is available, what other priorities there are in the state for, for aviation purposes. And what you see right there is, is what we're looking at. It gets a little bit, you know, more like Jell-O as you move down into the out years, you get to 2023, 24, 25, but as we get closer in those years, it moves up. All of those priorities move up on the, on the list.
Can you, one of my questions is, how does this relate to, I know there's a master plan that's supposed to be happening?
Yeah, so coming up at the, at the end of this month, we're going to be having our public participation session right here in the council chamber. And Michael Baker has been working on that as well, and they're going to come in and show everybody what the last couple of years of, of efforts have, have culminated with. Public will get a chance, just like with any master plan or any major project like that, the public will get a chance to participate in that. So...
Do those reflect, does like the master plan reflect these things that you, your dream list?
Yeah, so, so you start here. We start with the master plan, and what's on the master plan will be used to inform this list. Right now, we're, you know, we're kind of going, I won't say, I won't say winging it, but these are important projects that need to be, need to be funded. And we pull them off of maybe a prior airport layout plan that we've had in the past. But once we have that master plan, everything is documented. Now, that's not to say that everything that's on this list has to come off of that master plan. There's always going to be stuff that comes up that's unanticipated. Something breaks, a piece of concrete gets a crack in it or something like that that you didn't anticipate, and that has to be repaired right away. So, but you're, you're absolutely right. That's, that's where the master plan starts.
So why would we do this list before a master plan unless there's a deadline?
We have to do this every year, whether we've got a master plan or not. There's no way around it. It's required. If it's not on here, it doesn't get funded.
It's required by the FAA?
It's required by the FAA and it's enforced by the state on the FAA's behalf. What the FAA does is they say, "We have a certain amount of money available every, every year to go out to all the airports in Louisiana." And they go to the state and the state says, "Okay, here's our list of the order that we need those projects completed and funded." And sometimes we fall above the lines, sometimes we're, we're below the line. Just depends on what the priorities are.
So, but why would you do a master plan where there's people giving input? And I know it's a little different than other ones because people aren't as, you know, knowledgeable about the function of an airport, you know, the functioning of an airport. about the function of an airport, you know, the functioning of an airport. But why would you set these funding goals before you've had your master plan prepared? And I understand you don't always have, you know, I get that point. But if we're coming up with a master plan to come up with how we want the airport to grow, why has this come before that?
So the capital improvement plan is always the most important thing to the FAA. The master plan takes a substantial amount of money. I think we're paying close to, close to $400,000 for that, to have that done. And that was done with 80% funding from the FAA and 20% from the state. Until we had that funding, we didn't have a master plan. So without that assistance, until the FAA is ready to do that, then we have nothing, the only thing we have to go by is the CIP. When we have that master plan, that doesn't mean the CIP will go away. We'll pull things off of that master plan to inform and populate this CIP that you see in front of you.
So this little project scope justification is 700 feet. That's just to add more to the runway. Is that 700,000?
Which one specifically are you looking at, I'm sorry?
2019 funding, year requested.
That's the 65,000.
Yeah, but, yeah, then it all, yeah, then it goes up to 700. So that's the extended runway, 700 feet.
Now, that is a threshold recovery. So we've got that runway right now, and what we've got is we've got a property across Highway 190 that we want to obtain and clear of trees. And the way to explain it is, if you're coming in or you're taking off from that runway, there's a certain amount of runway that's designated that you can't use right now. In fact, if you were to come out there and look at it, I'll show you, where you'll see there's the end of the runway, and then you have these arrows pointing down the runway about 700 feet that show the pilot where he has to land. He can't touch down before that because the glide slope that he has to take is over those trees that are too tall right now. So we get rid of those trees, and we've got a 700-foot longer runway that we can use now.
But you can, you'll just be preparing for down the road, just having it just there?
Yeah, the grubbing and the prep work that needs to go on. Brian, can you?
Right. There are a couple of different studies that, I'm sorry, Brian Smith, 2600, City Place Drive, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. There are a couple of different studies and requirements that the FAA have to approve the threshold before it is installed to ensure that there's enough, there's safety for any pilots or passengers that are taking off or landing there. So they'll do a threshold sighting study. They'll have it flown to make sure, or will have it flown to make sure there are no penetrations or obstructions in the approach, any environmental requirements, just various steps that the FAA requires that you complete before they approve a project to actually recapture that displaced threshold.
Is this if we buy the land, or is this if we don't buy the, I mean?
If we don't obtain the land, that goes away.
Okay. So this, all of, and there's four projects for that, seven, three projects on that. So there's 19, 20, and 21. There's three projects, and it adds up to quite a bit of money. That's in addition to what would cost to buy the land.
Correct. And that'll be funded in the out years.
What are we constructing? That's what I'm kind of confused about.
The construction portion, you'd need to re-mark the runway, relocate the, some of the nav aids, relocate the lights.
Construction to the runway, then, not anything to do with the land?
Correct. Correct. Yes, ma'am.
And this is all coming from state and federal funding? No local funding or?
For those projects, those are 90%.
Like the 700?
Yeah. Correct. 90%.
This is just correct. I'm just, I guess, it looks, it says 0% other and local, and it's just state and federal. So pretty much the runway addition would be all state-funded and federally funded.
It would be very unusual for the state to give us the money that we need to buy that property and then not give us any of the other money that we need to complete the project. So that's what, that's the game plan.
I think I was confused because I didn't realize it would cost more money once you buy the land. I mean, the scope of the project never was really kind of talked about other than buy the land, cut the trees, and we're good. But you're saying there's actually all this other work, which we're not paying for, grateful for, but I'm just making sure I understand that these projects are to fund changes to the runway once that displacement zone is?
And to the property, the property itself, because of all the clearing and work and
And this is pretty much proposals. This really isn't really. I mean, we don't really know that it'll be funded. I mean, we're just assuming that it'll be funded by the state and federal.
So when we sat, when we sit down in the summer months, getting to start building this document, we're sitting down with the state and the FAA people who are going to be doing this funding. And we're saying, "We want to put this on the list," and they say, "Go ahead and put it on the list because we can tell you with relative confidence that you'll likely get that money." So nobody can say for sure until we submit our list and it goes to Baton Rouge and everything gets blessed off on. But that's what they're saying.
Right. It has, correct. It has been vetted by the FAA and the state already. It goes into their priority and needs program, and they prioritize the projects based on several different criteria. Number one being safety, and then they go from the center line of the runway or taxiway out. So those items receive top priority.
So if everything went perfect and we got all the things that we want, we wouldn't actually have that displacement zone and everything done until 2021? Because we would have to fund these in each year? Is that?
That's what we're looking at because we have to, we know, we have a certain amount of money that we know we're going to get every year, and we have to make sure we use it in the best way, the right priority, essentially.
What's the status on that tower, the tower getting improved? Are y'all, when's the construction start on that?
I think that, yep. We actually received our final approval from our funder, state. State came, I think, the week after the last council meeting, and I was literally on the phone with the Delta Regional Authority before coming to this council meeting. So we have all of the approvals. I'll probably be calling the apparent low bidder, Spartan Building Corporation, tomorrow to talk about a pre-construction meeting, and then it's just how quickly can we get started. So it's been a long time coming. You've heard me say that. It has been a long time coming. We are all wanting this project to move forward quickly at this point. So hopefully, we'll start construction November, early November.
Great.
Possibly sooner, but that's probably my best estimate right now.
Questions? Anyone from the audience on this matter? All right. Pleasure of the council. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diviterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Final adoption ordinance, none. Introduction of ordinance set for public hearing, none. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.